So if you'll just bear with us while every, all the other participants set up their audio and we get people connected, we'll give a minute or two and then we'll get going. Okay, there we go.
By side.
Sophie, come here. Come here. That's.
Hi.
Leo.
Hi Leo.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. So it's three o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started. As people come, just bear with us. This is also where we've done lots of student study sessions this way, but this is our first live parent meeting. So bear with us if there's any glitches, we're learning as we go as well. We're gonna go ahead and share our screen with you, we have an agenda for the day. Can everyone see our agenda? We've shared the screen so that everyone can see what's on the agenda today. First of all, we want to just welcome all of you guys. We know that this is a really crazy time for everyone. We're gonna do the best we can to navigate together. It does create a lot of background noise in Zoom if you have background stuff, so we would ask you to just find a quiet place to be with us at. And we know that there's lots of questions. So what we'll do is I will cover each element on the agenda with general information. And then we'll have a short question and answer session just about that topic. So if you still have questions about that topic, then we can take them in order once we've discussed it. Hopefully, we're able to answer the majority of your questions.
Thank you all for being this.
That's our goal. And then we'll begin, we'll have kind of a general teacher session. Well, today's meeting is specifically for our kindergarten through second grade parents. First of all, if you're new to kindergarten in our school, we're excited to have you. And if you're returning to our school, we're super eager to see you back. The first thing on the agenda for today's meeting is building reopening information. We realize that everyone is eager for a confirmed date of when students will return brick and mortar to the building. Unfortunately, until the governor has his next announcement on August 7th, we are unable to provide that confirmed date at this time. What we can tell you is that we will begin learning for all students on August 6th, next Thursday. Our Meet the Teacher Night is listed on Dojo as well of our, as well as our social media pages. And that is next Monday, August 3rd. Just as soon as we get more information, August 7th, we will get that out to you as quickly as we possibly can. Please just know and take into account that we don't receive any information like ahead of time, you know, or from the school board separately. We hear it as soon as you guys do. So as soon as we hear it, we work together collaboratively to be able to make informed decisions that we feel meet the needs of our students and families. And so we will get you a brick and mortar reopening just as quickly as we possibly can because we realize that that's important and necessary for you as working parents. So hopefully, that at least answers your questions on reopening information as far as in person. Is there anybody that has any questions as far as the actual building reopening?
No.
We're good to go. Okay, so moving on, we want to talk just a little bit about the options available. We will all be remote on August 6th for the first day of school. Once we do have the go-ahead for reopening, then we will provide a date where we begin our blended learning model. I did not share that screen, but you all have access to the same paperwork on Dojo and it has our plan. And it gives very specific information blended versus online learning. So feel free to access that, that's on the Dojo main school story page. And you can read through there, but basically just to cover a little bit, if a student is doing remote learning, then all of their instruction would be done online through our virtual platforms. We will, are in the process because we have gotten a lot of enhanced options of training on that. And so as soon as we receive the training as teachers to be able to effectively instruct the students and parents, we will roll that information out to you. So as far as the remote learning, your students will get passwords. You'll get very clear instructions as parents what to do. And then we'll also have teachers and people available to you because we know that questions will arise. If you pick the blended learning model, once we're able to return to in-person school, it will basically be an A-B schedule. So if you look on the agenda, we have it posted on what days, what grade levels will be in the building. And the reason for this is to keep the building capacity at less than 100% so that we can practice safe social distancing. So on Monday and Wednesday, in the blended environment, we would have our K-1 class, R3, 4, and 7, 8. And then we would flip-flop. So Monday, Wednesday, those students would be in the building. Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, they would be remote. Tuesday, Thursday likewise would be dedicated to second and third graders and fifth and sixth graders physically on campus with the other classes doing remote learning. So that's kind of what the remote versus blended looks like. But if you access those documents that I mentioned previously, it will give you a lot more detailed information about that. So does anybody have any specific questions as far as blended versus remote learning that I'd be happy to answer for you?
No. No.
We're all, you guys are such an easy group, wow! So the next thing is the learning expectations for blended and remote learning and what, what that will look like. And what we will do as teachers, what we expect our students to do and how we expect the parents to contribute to that as well. So there's another document that I'm going to share with you. We have not rolled out the actual schedules yet. We just provided them to teachers today and we'll be rolling them out to you as quickly as they build in their actual learning times. What we will offer in the remote learning environment, whether you choose the blended option or all remote, is that when a student is working remotely, they will be required to attend a live virtual class session for each core teacher. That is how we take and track our attendance. We've tried to offer a lot of flexibility in that, so we've provided two sessions each day. So that accommodates various schedules of parents working. So if you're occupied in the mornings, that's okay. Your child can pick up the afternoon session or vice versa. But we are offering two sessions of each one to make it very easily accessible to parents. So if you can't attend the first one, don't worry about it. There's always a second one each day. And we will roll those schedules out to you and you will know exactly what time your children are offered as soon as the teachers give you the formal schedule at your Meet the Teacher session next Monday. So students are required, and that's only a 30-minute session. And basically, what that accomplishes is the teacher making the personal connections with students, seeing students, knowing they're okay, going over what the lessons are for that subject area that day, and asking if there's any questions. The actual teaching of the lesson will come in the form of recorded lessons from teachers. So if your student's busy working and they don't understand something, they have the ability to go into a recorded lesson of the teacher modeling what the standard or objective is that they are trying to teach. And that'll also help you out at home as parents. If it's something that you're not quite sure how to do yourself, they'll have those recorded lessons available from the teachers. And those will be available 24/7, so there's not a certain time. They'll be up there for you to access and they'll all be there for, for your use. The other component is, so that will track our attendant, our daily attendance. The other component is, is that students access their lessons each day and all lessons will have a time limit and a due, due date on them. And so they're required to turn all of their lessons in, in a timely fashion in order to get credit for doing those lessons. So all of the bullets are pretty much here, but they submit all their assignments. They reach out, they stay connected with their teachers. And then parents, we just ask that you do the same thing. We realize it's really difficult for you guys to be trying to balance work and teaching your kids at home and we don't want you to do that. We just want you, if you need help or assistance, that's what we're here for. Reach out to us, let our teachers support and help you. So if you guys just take that initiative to reach out if your children don't understand something, because we can only fix things if we know that there's an issue. And just helping your child, ensuring, making sure that they have a remote workspace set up that's conducive to a positive learning environment during their actual study time. And everything is there. And then in addition, the teachers will have online class hours, office hours. They will always respond to your questions. We ask that you give them 24 business hours because sometimes it could be late afternoon that you reach them and they're already occupied with a class. So give them 24 hours, but they'll always respond to you within 24 hours, always there to help, support you as parents and our students. We also ask parents, if for any reason your child can't attend their virtual session to get credit for being in school, that the same, the same way you would actually call school if we were in person, call and just report that absent, absence to your, to our office. So that's kind of just what the teachers will do. What we ask that you do as parents and what we expect of our students. Our teachers will also be reaching out to students on an individual or small group level every single week so that your students, even though they're at home, can get that individualized instruction from the teachers. Or maybe you have a child that's shy, that doesn't feel comfortable asking questions in the group setting, they get that one-on-one time with their teachers. That's really important to us and hopefully they'll take advantage of that. So we ask that you encourage that as well. Our job as administrators, principals, is just to oversee the daily operations, ensure everyone has the support and everything that they need. We will always maintain open lines of communication. We do ask that if an issue arises, you go to the teacher first and try to work it out. But if for any reason you don't feel that you can, by all means, reach out to us, that's what we're here for, to support you, to support our students and to support our teachers as well so that during these difficult times, we can provide just as much as, you know, comfort, support that everyone needs across the board. So that's kind of what we expect. Does anybody have any questions as far as what the learning expectations are?
If you just raise your hand, because we've been asked to mute everybody until you had a question so that everybody can hear. If you just raise your hand or even send us a quick little message if you have a question, I'll go ahead and unmute you and then you can ask your question.
Okay. So the next thing on the agenda, I just want to talk a little bit about our distance learning lab and what that will look like. You know, a lot of students have been home for, you know, a long period of time. Parents are home with them and that's totally fine. But we also understand that there are some unique situations where parents have young children that cannot be home by themselves or, you know, they for whatever reason can't access learning by themselves. We want to do the very best we can to accommodate those situations. So it will be limited due to the social distancing of the number of students we can have in each distance learning lab. But if for any reason that you cannot teach your child at home or your child cannot be at home, safety is our number one thing. We ask that you please reach out to us. We will not be able to offer transportation during that time because it, it will be a limited number of students. But if you can bring your child to and from during school hours, your, your child is welcome to use our distance learning labs. And we will have two different distance learning labs set up, one for the K-4 side and one through, one for the 5, 8 side. So that will allow us to keep the, the students a little more distanced and the labs at smaller capacities as well. But we will offer that all five days a week. And we will begin the distance learning lab for the day programming on August 6th, the first day of school, not when in-person resumes. So if that's something that you need, we just ask that you reach out to us on an individual level and we'll definitely do whatever it takes to help you, help accommodate that need. Any questions on the distance learning lab or how that works? And it will be set up just as a student would, would work at home for you. So it wouldn't be a regular school day, electives integrated. They would come to work to do their, come to school to do their work in the lab. They would just utilize our technology here at school where they can be supervised and someone making sure they're doing it. And then we would offer obviously breaks, lunch, that type of thing throughout the day as well. So if there's no questions on that, the next question that I know a lot of families have asked about is devices. We have currently ordered extra devices. Are, we do have a new state-of-the-art computer lab, but those are desktop computers. So those are not something that we can just take apart and intake to families. We have ordered a specific number of Chromebooks to be able to help families in need. In the meantime, if we have a family that does not have a device at all, we want to make sure all of our students can access technology. Please reach out to us and we will make sure that we have a tablet available to send home with you. There is a form that you have to fill out in order to get that, but we will send a tablet home for you to work with. And then when we get the Chromebooks in, we'll determine more needs at that time and make sure that you have access to those as well. But they are anticipating a six to eight week delivery time on those. So they're ordered, we just have to be a little patient. Also know that if you don't have a tablet or any type of laptop or device at home, one thing that was really important to us is that we feel kids learn best when they have immediate gratification. And all of the students are pretty good at accessing cell phones. And so we wanted to make sure that we pick learning platforms that could be easily accessed by a cellphone. So we will be using MobiMax and Google Classrooms, both which most students can do almost all of their work just from a cellphone. But again, if that's not an option for your family, we're happy to help you with a, some type of device until the Chromebooks come in. So we will, we will assist with that. Any questions as far as device usage? And if you need a device, just like with the distance learning lab, reach out to us and we'll help set that, set that up for you. The next thing is physical distancing on campus. So when we go back to blended learning, we will have our hallways set up so that everything is one-way traffic. So if you're coming or going, there, everything is marked on the floor, just like if you go to the grocery store. Now, I guess that's the sense of new normal, so to speak. But the same type of thing as far as physical distancing. We will not be requiring students to wear masks in the event that they can safely social distance and be more than six feet apart. However, in a school setting, that is not always possible. So in the event that they cannot be six feet apart, we do have to follow city and county guidelines that right now mandate everyone in Maricopa County to wear masks. So that is definitely what we will be doing on their in-person days for now. But again, as we get more information on the 7th, we can update that as we need to. Any questions about physical distancing or how we're working that? Wow, you guys are so easy. The nutrition program is the next thing on the agenda. We are part of the Federated Free and Reduced Breakfast and Lunch Program and we want to make sure that all of our students are able to eat. Hungry minds do not learn well and so they need a good breakfast and lunch to be able to learn. We will be offering that to all of our families. And Ms. Rutledge is actually the one that takes the nutrition program. So I'm gonna kind of just scoot to the side a little bit and let her take over for a minute and explain that to you.
Hi. So if you were with us last year and you qualified for free or reduced lunch, you're gonna go ahead and stay qualified in that, in that qualification for 30 days. Ms. Clark is reaching out to all of our families that we have listed on our rosters. Anybody that already receives any type of SNAP benefits, you've probably already been certified and you probably already received those benefits. So she'll be reaching out to you either via phone or Dojo to tell you that you're qualified for free breakfast and lunch. And then you'll just, you'll just know that when we offer those pickup dates that you will be able to pick up food for your families. I will be sending out, well, tomorrow on Dojo, I'll list our application. So if you did not get a phone call or you do not, or you're not sure that if you qualify or if you were not with us last year, you don't need, you know, you need to know if you qualify, go ahead and download that application off of Dojo. You can fill it out either electronically if you're able to and send it back to us. I'll put all of our fax, emails there. Or if you can, print it out and bring it over to the school. We're here from 9 to 3 every single day. We are not allowing anybody in the building for an extended period of time, but if you need to drop something off, absolutely, come on in, drop it off. And then we'll let you know right away if you qualify for free or reduced lunch. With that, I will also be sending you out a Google Doc, another form for you to fill out that just tells me, yes, I'm gonna pick up food and then I will let you guys know when you can pick those up. Right now, we're looking at a pickup date of August 6th. So on August 6th, from 10 to 12 PM or AM to PM, you will pick up food for the 6th and the 7th. And then on Monday, you can pick up food for Monday, Tuesday, and then Wednesday, Wednesday's breakfast. On Wednesday, you'll be able to pick up Wednesday's lunch, Thursday, and Friday's breakfast and lunch. So we're gonna try to do two pickups for you if you are in need of some food. So it's just a quick form that says, yes, I want it. When I get the menu or the calendar, I'll set it up for you so you can see what you're getting. Unfortunately, you cannot pick and choose or change anything, but you know, if you want it, it's there. And if there's something in there that you don't like, you can definitely give it away to somebody else. The kids know all about the sharing bowl, so you can definitely do that as well. That's all I have for the nutrition program. Does anybody have any questions about it? It's gonna be similar type foods. I think all the kids pretty much liked it. So, you know, burritos, stuff like that, that they really enjoyed a lot last year. So it'll be the same company that we used. And so they'll just be able to pick up on the boxes. There will be instructions for how to store it and reheat it as well. So when you pick up, we'll also have another form in case you're not gonna be able to pick up, but maybe your neighbor goes to our school and they want, you want to pick up for them or they want to pick up for you. There's a form that you have to fill out that allows us to release that for you. Unfortunately, if you have students at other schools, we cannot give you food for that child. So it's only for the children that come to our school. Whatever, however they qualify, that's the only food that we're able to give you at this time. If your child is in high school or goes to a Mesa Public School, they'll have to go to that school to pick up their food. So again, if you have any questions, you can reach out to me or to Ms. Clark. We both run the program, okay?
All right. So moving on from the nutrition program, we want to touch on arrival and dismissal procedures because if you're a new family this year, that's okay because last year's procedures won't matter to you, so it'll all be new. But if you're a returning family, we are doing things very different than we did last year. So when we have blended learning days, if you bring your child to and from school, when you bring them to school, we will no longer start K-4 from the multipurpose room. That will not be a drop-off point. And the dance room will not be a drop-off point for the 5th through 8th grade. So just as we did before where we had staff members at the front and back door, we will have a staff member at the back door for the K-4 building and we will have a staff member at the back, I'm sorry, the teachers for the 5th through 8th grade at their back doors on the west side of the building. You will pull up to the back door that is open. Your child will receive a temperature check. If they receive breakfast at school, they will grab their breakfast. It'll be a grab and go. And then they will go directly to their classroom. That way, we don't have large numbers of students congregating in one area. Pickup in the afternoon, we'll go the same way. You'll pull up to that back door. It may take just a minute more because they're not all in one area, so they have to go to the classroom to get the child. But you'll pull up to the respective back door, tell them who you're there for. They'll go in and get your child from their glass classroom and bring them right out to you. So on blended learning days, that's, that's how it will be a little bit different. But we'll have it all posted outside for you. So the first few days until you get or remember which door. We know there's a lot of doors in the back. It'll all be posted and easy for you to see. Does anyone have any questions as far as pickup, drop-off? If your child is gonna be tardy, let me just add, then you would bring them in and sign them in in the front office still. That would be the same. We just won't allow you to walk them to the classroom because we're trying to limit the number of people in the buildings. But you would bring them in the front, sign them in, they would get their temperature check and then they would be on their way to their class. So that's how arrival and dismissal will be a little bit different. We wanted to touch on school closure because this situation is so fluid. It could happen that we go back to school and a month later, they say, no, we're gonna shut everybody down and we have to be prepared for that. So we just want you to know that in the event of a school closure, we will resume remote learning just as we started the year. So you would just go immediately to remote, remote learning situations as we started and then we would get information out to you just as quickly as it became available. But we're crossing our fingers that everyone can be safe and we don't have to have something like that. The next subject is transportation. A lot of people, families rely on our buses to get to and from school. In the event that you do utilize transportation on your child's blended learning day, they will be able to utilize our school buses. Any student that rides the school bus, because it's a confined, closed area, they do have to wear their mask while they are on the bus. But we will offer transportation just as soon as we can go to blended learning and in-person school days. Does anybody have any type of transportation questions? You guys are a quiet group. Before and after-school care, we will still offer and honor before and after-school care. The only thing that we respectfully request is that it's reserved for parents that really need it for working. In previous years, anybody could sign up for before and after-care, you know, and use it whether they were working or not. And because we are required to social distance, we ask that we reserve those spots for parents that really need that time and don't get off work until a later time. But we will have the before and after-care program available for blended learning days. If your child uses the Remote Distance Learning Lab, Distance Learning Lab is, is honored from 8:15 till 3:45. So if they're not signed up for the after-care program, they do need to make sure that they're picked up on the appropriate times. And then the last thing on the agenda for today is financial responsibilities. We wanted to let everyone know, we realize that this has heavily financially impacted a lot of families and times are really difficult for everyone. We will be waiving all elective fees for all families this year. So there will not be any type of elective fees for our students. The only type of fees that we will have obviously is to run our before and after-school program is the registration fee for that. And then if you don't qualify for, for your reduced lunches and you're intending to purchase breakfast or lunch, you would, you would be responsible for paying for those and then their school shirts when they resume in-person learning because we will still require uniforms. But other than that, we want to be able to help out as much as we, we possibly can. So there will not be any elective fees to be paid this year. And I think that we covered all the topics that are, seem to be a lot of hot questions that parents have. But if there's anything that was not covered on the agenda or something specific that you have a question about, feel free to ask. No one, no question? Oh, what? Sorry, just one second. Okay, so the question is uniforms. How uniforms are gonna go is that we offer, we sell the uniforms right in-house. We're not open to the general public and we're limiting how people come and go. So if you do need to purchase uniforms for your child this year, you can either schedule, call Ms. Hughes, make an appointment and say, I'd like to come in this date and time and get my uniforms. Or if you just happen to be in the neighborhood and think you got off work 10 minutes early, you can come to the front. We just ask before you come into the school that you call to make sure that there isn't another family in here so that we don't get crowding in our front office. So if you want to just stop by, just call the office from your car and say, I'm in the parking lot. May I please come in? And we'll get everybody the uniforms that they need. Does that answer the question? Any other questions anybody has? We're super, super excited. We know that this is really challenging for everyone and it's really our goal to make everyone feel as comfortable and supported as possible. Our theme this year is together we are better and we really believe that even if we're remote, together we can, we can really do great things, whether we're physically close or not. And we really appreciate the resiliency that you have all had, the support, the patience, the understanding. Families and students and our teachers too is what makes LFPA great. And we couldn't do it without you and we really appreciate what you bring to our school. And I think there was one or two more questions. We actually already have t-shirts available to, in the office. They dropped off in order yesterday, I believe. So we do have a large quantity available right now. So you can, you're welcome to, to get those at any time. I'm just so excited to see some of the kids sitting side by side with their parents in meetings. We've missed everybody so, so much. So seeing your faces is the highlight of our day. So if you guys don't have any questions, we'll go ahead and end the meeting today. If you don't remember something I said, there's a lot of working parents that were unable to take. unable to take the time off to attend. So we have recorded today's session, and that will be available on our YouTube channel and on Dojo for viewing. So if you need to go back later and say, oh, what did she say about that? The recorded, the recorded session will be available for all families. So just don't forget that our Meet the Teacher is on Monday. They will have live and virtual sessions, and we look forward to everyone starting next Thursday. Hope you had a wonderful summer, and you guys have a great year. We're here if you need us. Thank you. Bye-bye.